For the Board of Adjustment, today is November 17th. Before we get started, I would like to talk about upcoming cases for the Board of Adjustment. And let me just go ahead and share my screen for the agenda. Okay, so we have a case coming up in December. It's scheduled to go before the public hearing on December 15th. It's Lopez Residence. It's a new garage. Address is 9198 East Sugarberry Place. They're going to be seeking a variance to allow an increase to the height of a detached garage that will exceed 12 feet. All of you Board members have informed me that you will be able to attend this public hearing. If any of that changes, please let me know as soon as possible. Before we get into the discussion of today's cases, I just want to make sure in your study session packet that I emailed you, you should have received the study session agenda along with the approval protest map for both cases that are going to be heard today, as well as those comments. C-10-21-08 had several emails because of the number of comments we received on that. So there was two emails that were sent with attachments, and then C-10-21-10 was just the first email that was sent to you with those comments and the approval protest map. If you could just let me know that you did receive those documents, those files, I would appreciate it.
I received everything. This is Bruce Dawson.
This is Alan. I received everything.
Kathy, you're muted.
Okay, I did receive those extra attachments, Mark. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kubic. I think, last Mr. Lugo. We do have enough here to continue. Okay, so moving on to the first case we have, I'm going to take this out of order. The first case we have is going to be C-10-21-10. That's Paulson Residence. It's a new carport addition. It's going to be located at 1328 East Elm Street. The zoning on that property is R2. Pull up a map here. Okay, so can anybody see this aerial?
Yep.
Yeah.
Great.
So this is a single-family residence with two detached accessory structures. One is a storage building which is located in the middle of the property, and then we have this detached garage building towards the rear of the property. The applicant is here to request a variance to allow the combined total gross floor area of all the accessory structures that are 200 square feet or larger to exceed 50% of the combined total gross floor area of the residence. Planning and Development Services staff does not have any objections to the applicant's requested variance, subject to the following condition, which is that the carport not be enclosed. Staff has no objections to this applicant's request because there are physical circumstances that are not self-imposed, and that being that this is an older carport. The carport is located right here. That's going to be attached to the garage. And essentially what's happening is that the applicant is proposing to remodel this carport. It's going to be approximately the same square footage, except that it's going to be a different building footprint. And because of this change, it's requiring a variance for the gross floor area exceeding 50%. So there's really no change to the property itself, other than there is an improvement to the carport. Staff saw no reason to oppose to this variance request, so we don't have any objection. To date, we have received a total of two written approvals and no written protest. So I'd be happy to answer any questions about this case if you have any.
Yeah, Mark. Mike Marks, I've got a question. Mark?
Sure.
Okay. The carport, the existing carport is that 540 square feet, and is the remodeled or revamped carport to be no greater than that same 540 square feet?
That's correct, Mr. Chair. It's just a different footprint.
Okay. And the second question is, are all of the accessory buildings, including the existing carport, permitted?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Okay, very good. Thank you. I think I do have one other question, and it's kind of a technical one, and I need to pull up the map that shows the approvals and the disapprovals, but there was some language, and I'm not sure I'm finding that map on my screen right here, but there was some language on that map that distinguished approval from approval by same owner, and I was a little confused about that. Do you know what I'm talking about?
I know.
Mark, did you understand the question?
Yes, I'm trying to pull up the map. Let me pull it up here. Okay, so can you see this? Is this the map you're referring to?
It is correct.
Okay, so what this signifies is that it's one property owner that owns multiple properties. So it's the same owner that owns all these properties, and that property owner submitted a comment form for each property, but we only counted as one approval since he owns multiple properties.
Well, that does clarify that. I was actually thinking that was a possibility, but discounted it given the number, but that's good. Thank you for the answer.
Sure, you're welcome.
And that's all I have.
Mark, Bruce Dawson, I have, is, does the owner live in this particular structure? He owns multiple, he owns multiple properties. I'm curious to know if he lives in this one.
You can ask the applicant that question. I believe he does. And I'm not aware of any additional properties that he does own.
Okay.
This is Kim. I own that property. And yes, I live in the dwelling to the front of it, and the garage is not occupied, and I only own one property.
Thank you very much.
Ms. Kubic, did you have a question?
No, I didn't. Mr. Paulson just answered it.
Any additional questions on this case?
Mark, this is Mike Marks, just one technical one. Are you addressing this item first in study session because you intend to hear it first in the public hearing?
That's going to be my recommendation, Mr. Chair, is that we suspend the rules and we do, we hear case C-10-21-10 first before we hear case C-10-21-08.
Okay, okay, thanks.
And Mr. Chair, as a further point of clarification, when we're suspending the rules, we also want to bring the other business item to the front to hear prior to the cases.
Can I interrupt? I apologize for doing that, but I take it that's Russland Wells speaking, and I just want to point out that I can't hear you, you're audible at all, your audio.
Can you hear me now?
It's better, but it's still not really good.
Okay. I'm having trouble with my microphone. Instead, it's maximum. We are going to hear the other business item first, and then case, the carport case, and then the TEP case.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay, if there's no additional questions on C-10-21-10, we'll move on to C-10-21-08. That's Tucson Electric Power. It's the power pole relocation modification on Silver Bell Road, which is along a scenic corridor zone. Can everybody see this map?
Yes, sir.
Yep.
Okay. I'm trying to make sure it can fit the full length here, but it's a little, yes.
Why wasn't that map provided in the second?
So this is part of the application? Okay, so this is a project that's located along Silver Bell that starts at approximately the intersection of Goret Road and continues north to approximately the intersection of El Camino del Cerro. And what it is, it's a road widening project that has multiple agencies involved that's scheduled for widening next year. So what the roadway improvements will include is widening Silver Bell Road from two lanes to a four-lane corridor with enhanced pedestrian pathways. So this is about a two-and-a-half-mile roadway stretch between Goret and El Camino del Cerro. So the planned roadway widening within this area is kicking in the need for the relocation of the electrical utilities. So the applicant is here before the board to request the variances, which is to relocate and modify the power poles and service lines above ground within a scenic corridor, and to install the new poles and service lines to be located above ground within a scenic corridor. All is shown on the submitted plans. Subject to two conditions, which is A, to coordinate with the Pima County Office of Sustainability and Conservation on the location of the poles to minimize disturbance and avoid damage to potential cultural resources, and B, applicant is to remove all de-energized pole, power poles, and associated infrastructure prior to Phase 2 completion. So there's, so there's with the widening of Silver Bell and having to relocate the power lines, it would have been, because it's in a scenic corridor zone, it would have been required that these lines be undergrounded. But there are physical circumstances, which is one of the criteria for the Board to grant a variance, and that being that there are significant cultural resources in the area, and not just that, but along with the flood, with this area being located in the flood zone, that necessitates the need to keep these power poles above ground. And just a reminder that these poles are already existing, and they were existing prior to the scenic corridor ordinance. So staff does not object to this request to keep these power poles located above ground. To date, we have received a total of 163 written protests that are located on the map, and 108 that are located off the map, and two written approvals. So at this time, I would like to go ahead and open it up to the board for any questions for staff.
Mark, I have a question or two. Do you know, and if you don't, then this would be a question for the petitioner, but do you know whether the poles that would be relocated would be of the same height and material as the existing poles?
Mr. Chair, members of the board, that's going to be, they're going to be taller poles. They're, and TEP can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe they're going to be the same height as the proposed new light poles, which are about 60 to 65 feet, and they will be different material.
And then, the text indicates that there are additional poles, and not nearly the same number as that exists. Do you have a number of the existing poles versus the number of the planned future poles?
Mr. Marks, I would think that would be a good question to ask during the public hearing, to ask the applicant.
Okay, okay, very good. Before I see, thank you, let me see if there is anything else. Oh, yeah, I do have a question further, and that is with respect to the Design Review Board and the recommendation that they made as explained in the staff report. It indicates that the design report produced its proposal and recommended approval, but subject to four conditions.
Mr. Marks is cutting out.
Do you hear me now?
I can hear you now, Mr. Marks. You were cutting out a little bit there.
Okay, well, let me know if that happens again, but I'm speaking to the Design Review Board conditions to their recommendation for approval, and I'm curious why staff did not incorporate those four conditions into the staff recommended conditions.
Mr. Chair, and so those conditions were conditions that are not enforceable by Planning and Development Services staff, because we have multiple agencies involved, that this is an RTA project, we would need to have those agencies weigh in on those conditions. So it wasn't recommended that we included that in the staff report. Ms. Wells, do you have anything to add to that?
Yes, Mr. Marks, those conditions are conditions of the RTA roadway project and not the Tucson Electric Power project. They're two separate projects. Although the electric power project is coming as a result of the widening of the road, those conditions are related to the actual road project, and therefore not related to this variance.
So they did make a recommendation, did they not, to the Board of Adjustment to recommend? Is that correct to say?
That is correct, Mr. Chair.
And so the recommendation they made to the Board of Adjustment, if I hear you correctly, did not contain the four conditions that are noted in the staff report?
No, Mr. Marks, it did contain those conditions, but staff did not bring those conditions forward in our recommendation because it's related to the roadway project.
Okay, okay, so you don't support them, but the Design Review Board did recommend them. Okay, I'm clear.
Mr. Chair?
Answer all the questions I've got at this point.
Ms. Kubic has her head up.
Yeah. I have a couple of questions. Can you hear me?
Yes, Ms. Kubic.
I'd like to know, and maybe this will be a question for TEP, but currently there are easily nine different lines on some of these poles, and I wondered if the number of lines would stay the same, or whether the upgrade would allow fewer lines. That's one question.
Ms. Kubic, anything that's directly related to the project, those are the questions that you can ask during the public hearing, and ask that of the applicant. If you have procedural questions or questions, just general questions about Mark's presentation, we can address that in study session. Otherwise, we can do that during the conference.
Okay, Russland, I do have a question that perhaps Mark or yourself can answer. Have they obtained 404 permits for the new construction? Is that all, have those been approved?
I will let the applicant address that.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Werthe?
Yes, I have a concern. First of all, we're being asked to do a variance for the telephone poles, for the power lines, but it seems like there's either a conflict or something that hasn't been explained as to the RTA's position, and who actually supports those recommendations that they made? Is that made by the mayor and council, or is the RTA its own decider, its own entity?
Mr. Werthe, I'm not sure which recommendations you're speaking of.
Well, no, I'm talking about, okay, so we have a multi, we have many different people in this project, okay? We have the RTA, we have the TEP, and we're supposed to decide for TEP on something that has been generated by the RTA, but yet the RTA did not ask us if we had anything to say about the project. And I'm a little concerned that this project, and many projects that the RTA proposes or approves, is being, how should I say, they're coming in the back door in order to get what they want to get done, make it possible. So if somebody could explain to me the legal relationship between the RTA, TEP, and the
Mr. Lux, would you like to attempt to answer that?
Chairman Mark and Board Member Werthe, so the RTA is a funding mechanism. It's the Regional Transportation Authority, so they fund transportation projects throughout the Pima County area. They fund projects based on a number of different factors, including expense, as well as priority given to them by the jurisdiction. So they fund things within the city of Tucson and outside of the city of Tucson and the city of Aurora Valley as well. Those funding priorities are then defined by the jurisdictions themselves, including the city of Tucson. And then, once funding has been achieved through the RTA funding mechanism, they're provided that funding. Then the jurisdictions can go ahead and institute the various projects. In this case, they instituted a project to widen Silver Bell at their described locations. RTA doesn't do any sort of construction itself or anything like that, it's just a funding mechanism. And the city of Tucson is the constructor, along with other agencies within the jurisdiction. As far as what the Board of Adjustment is here to do, the Board of Adjustment is only here to decide whether or not the power lines that are at that location must be, or can be allowed a variance from the requirement that they've undergrounded because of the scenic corridor zone. I hope, did that answer your question, Mr. Werthe?
Not really. Let me put it another way. Okay, so the RTA is a funding mechanism. Why didn't the RTA figure out a way to work with TEP to, when they do the widening, to underground these utilities?
That's not the, that's not the province of the RTA. It's requirement of TEP when they engage in, sort of, when they are engaged in, they have a franchise of the city of Tucson. When they engage in city projects, city has, through that franchise, then this is required to consult with them, and then depending on what the nature of their requirements are, they have to comply with those requirements. In this case, because the city is widening Silver Bell, Silver Bell is a scenic corridor zone, and in scenic corridor zones where new utilities are allowed, they're required to be undergrounded. Now, in this case, the only reason TEP is moving its poles is because of the city project. If the city wasn't widening Silver Bell, they wouldn't have been moving the poles or installing different poles. So given that, this is why TEP had to come to the board and request that they'll be allowed to remain above ground when they're moved, in some cases to the side of the street. Excuse me. So that's why the TEP is seeking the variance it's seeking. It's not the, I don't think it was TEP's stupidest to move the poles or reinstall the poles, it was because of the city project.
Okay, I understand that. So let me reiterate then what I understand. TEP is the only entity that is actually penetrating the ground where there may be archaeological site or material. The road widening is not going to penetrate the ground deep enough to disturb those areas. Is that correct?
That would be a question I would ask of the applicant. I'm not sure that, I believe that's correct, but I don't want to speak without the knowledge that they have in terms of how ground penetration occurs. But my understanding is that because of the necessity, because of what was required for undergrounding, the line, the transmission line through that area, the undergrounding would be much more invasive than the poles or the poles that they're going to install. That's my understanding of what their application is.
Thank you, Mr. Lux.
You're quite welcome.
I have no further questions.
Ms. Kubic, you still have a question? I'm sorry, Mr.
Mr. Dawson, you have a question?
Yeah, I do, more of a comment or anything. In my career, I worked on a number of University of Arizona projects in the last 13 years with Pima County, in particular on the Animal Care Center. I did a lot of work on that, and you find out that this entire riverbed, river, is full, it was full of villages, full of people, full of burial grounds, and the Animal Care Center sat on something that they called ironically "The Rabid Ruin." And so it's just, is chuck full. So when you start digging in the ground like that, so the compelling letter I saw was from the tribes, and they're concerned about digging these trenches for underground power. And so anyway, that's, the whole area is simply full of villages, burial grounds, and archeologically sensitive types of areas. So that's all I have for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mark?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
I do have one more question, and I'm, I've got the code out. And I'm in the scenic corridor zone section, which is, let me just vote it if I can, 5.3 of the UDC. And if you go specifically to the section on utilities, which I had in front of me a second ago, and I've sort of displaced, but I'll find it real quick. I found it. It's 5.3.9. And it reads in subsection A, "All new utilities for development on private property or on public right-of-way along scenic routes shall be underground." Which seems to be clear, but I'd like to ask for your clarification on what are new utilities? And are these utilities, which are existing but are forced to be relocated due to a roadway project, considered new?
Mr. Marks, yes, because they are replacing some of the poles with additional lines, larger lines, they are considered to be new utilities.
Well, I appreciate that. Let me ensure I understand. It's not the new pole, it's the, that the poles will have new lines on them?
It's the combination, yes.
Okay, okay, okay. So you can, this matter's been considered and decided upon, and so these are considered to be new utilities. I accept that. Okay, thank you. And that's all.
Mr. Lusk, you have your hand up.
I apologize as well, that was from previously.
Mr. Castro, I believe that concludes the information for our study session. Am I correct?
That is correct, Ms. Wells. We can convene to executive session if the board desires to.
Yes.
Okay, so members of the public, please stay seated where you are. We're going to go into an executive study session, and we will return and commence the public hearing at the conclusion of our study session. Thank you.